I figured it's not that much bigger than the Lincoln. I used to drive a horse trailer.
This is the time and place for the Lorhan School District Board of Education regular meeting. Have everybody stand for a silent meditation and a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, Kim.
Mrs. Steel. Mr. DeAndrea.
Here.
Mrs. Glad.
Here.
Mr. Kalcik.
Here.
Mr. Lammon.
Here.
Mr. Meadows.
Here.
Mr. Raymond.
Here.
Mr. Renzi.
Here.
Mr. Seppert.
Here.
Eight A's, one U's. Or eight present, one U's.
Thank you. Make them motion for the adoption of the agenda.
Make the motion.
Second.
Our motion has been made and seconded. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Recognition of visitors or guests? Anybody wish to speak tonight? If you want to do it now or under transportation, it doesn't matter. You can go now if you want.
But basically what this agreement is saying is it's a comparison between a second page, you'll see where I... It says Lorhan agreed with three bundles. Agreed with first student transport our Delphi students currently focusing on students by one bus. At $147.80 per day, $177.80 per day, $147.80. Therefore, reducing the need for M&amp;R transportation, four vans, possibly more. M&amp;Rs cost $200.85 per van, $177.80 to $147.80. So they're sharing $116,000, $41.20. Just, just not sure. First of all, I would like to point out that they said they have to do a bundle to give the 147 days. If you look back, or if you look the next page, you will see where it's located. There's a copy of the first student contract where it lists a shuttle, or 2023, 2024 school year, $147.80. I don't know why they bundled it, but they did. But it stated in there that they have these vans to make a run. So that's my first point about it. The second point is I trust the board, the office, and the transportation director that these four vans don't make the runs for Lorhan's students. They just do, they only do the second run for the Delphi. So we have seats on the van. For these kids. And vans go run. We have this four year, I hear we get 30 vans. We lost two vans to get the A's out. And we took three vans from us to get the first student. When we started, we paid 25, they didn't lose any. Anybody have any questions for the first part? You can see there, there's literally, you're actually paying $26,000, $160.80. The second part, in black, is what Dr. Wallace gave me. Part of the bundle, first student transportation, transports our Delphi students, the three of their vans, for $265 a day, $177.80 per day, $147,000, $150,000. M&amp;R's cost per van for a van is $200.85. At 177 days, so $16, $651.35. Therefore, on the side of the bundle, this is paying more than the first student vans, but it's part of the agreement. I just want clarification on why you added the bundle on the positive part. The Delphi box, the shuttle box, even if you don't put them back on, four vans aren't that much. And you believe in what the Delphi, it's clearly stated in their contract, they pay for the first one, the shuttle, for $147.80.
I can respond. I just want to make sure you have an opportunity to finish. No, are you finished?
Well, you have one part of it.
I want to go ahead and finish.
So the paragraph above is correct. Off the district, we need the first student vans at higher costs, no contract, and no for action. That's another, this whole deal is a place. As you aren't aware of it, personally, I contacted you. And the board was aware, I've talked to all the board members, I don't know where it was. I don't know how Transportation Director and Mr. Renzi made this deal outside of school or without a contract. The bundle, I just, it does, it costs $26,000 more. This bundle costs $26,000. So on the last page, I put a breakdown, like I did in the last one. Colored area for like 57 days, paid $36,56. Coward runs two vans, you pay an additional $7,698. This is today, this is for November 15. Therefore, you pay $11,300, $45,000, $15,000 more. And our contract is a lot different. And then, you know, if you wrote down the last time, I'm going to break this down further. 2023, 2024 school year, M&amp;R transit, $100,370 without, without the summer time. That is considered 177 days. We use nerdy vans. So your daily cost, all the inputs, sickness, pain, nose, cold, moose, chowder, layovers, AIDS, the Pittsburgh runs, the two big runs you lost, you're still only at $226,000, $227,000. Still, only $20 left for the first student. I would just like the board to take some kind of action, let me know, write what I'm missing.
First, I have numerous meetings throughout every month with the department heads that I have direct oversight of. One of the things, based on our budget, that I speak to them about is find ways within your department to save us money. And that's a directive I give them regularly when we meet and we talk about what those initiatives are. Mr. Barron did talk to Mr. Renzi to come up with this bundle agreement. In the bundle agreement, and maybe that's my fault for using the semantics. In order to get the bundle agreement, I'm referring to coinciding the bus with the vans. That as a bundle. Looking at the same scenario that you just cited, yes, we are saving $116,000 and $116,000, $41.20. Second part, you're right, we're paying them more on the bundle side of it, of 3406265. But at the end of the day, we are coming out $81,978.55 to the district's benefit. And why did this happen and what prompted all this and why was there no board action? When, and I discussed this with you. When we started looking at the bleeding of the district, so to speak, and the financial side of things, I started looking through the transportation side and I noticed that there were some irregularities in the billing, the invoices. One of which was a percent and a half being added to various items. Probably about four or five different cost structures that shouldn't have been added and were added over the course of a couple of years before I got into it. Likewise, there were some charges, one specifically, a $50 charge, I was being charged double on rider ships that should have only been $50. When that came to my discovery, I was a little bit put back by it, I was a little bit aggravated, as I told you. There's a level of distrust there. And one of the reasons that we moved forward with that, Mr. Barron brought it to me, and if anyone's to blame here is myself because I didn't bring it as aggressively to the board as I did. But the bundle part, or the wording of bundle is a semantic issue, not a, well, we had to have this to, you know, it's, it's, I know it's going to be 147, that's their rate for the bus. But for them to bring in the vans in order to save us that money, that's the bundle part that I'm talking about, that's a semantic issue. And when you talk about the amount of vans, this year, last I checked, instead of having 31 vans, we have 25 vans that are running, which is six vans less than we had last year. Okay, 35 vans less than we had last year. I mean, you can take them from where you say you want to take them, but I also know that we have one bus taking a group of students that would normally be on four, maybe five vans for less cost. That's a Delphi. Yeah, and I'm just explaining it back that... Mr. Barron, if you have something to add, please do.
The ETR report is our summary that we turned into the state. The ETR report from May from this year, that's how we get reimbursed. M&amp;R gave us an ETR report, we put down 31 vans. That's what the vans that they turned in cost. Okay? One thing that we noticed that as we started this year, we have 25 vans. Which Mr. Scott just agreed upon. One thing I want to explain to everybody, the vans we have for first student are our vans all day long. We take, we've taken 11 sick kids home from schools, which we've been charged from M&amp;R. We put one parent to a meeting, which we've been charged from M&amp;R. We take one student, we take a shuttle from CTI, I'm sorry, the opposite, from the Delphi over to CTI, free. Okay? That's on that van. We pick up a homeless student in Uniontown and take him to the middle school, free. Those are all the benefits of us having a one, one price van that we use all day long. That is added another $4,000 that we haven't paid off. And I have documentation for that. $4,000 that we haven't paid off yet because we have those vans, we'll be in the second week of November. Imagine taking 11 kids home in October, November. What's it going to be like when we get to June? It'll be 50 kids, 60 kids. Thing about it is, those are our vans, those are our vans all day long, we pay at one price and one price of. We don't pay to take a sick kid home, we don't pay for a, uh, 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 take a parent, which is in their contract, in the M&amp;R contract, which to take a parent to a meeting, we don't pay for any of that now. We pick a homeless kid up every day and drop them off every day, free. And that's part of that deal, free, that's our van. If I call that a van, he's at, that van is at the school in five minutes. Not that they wouldn't be there in five minutes, but it's free. And that's what this is all about, free. We're, you know, back in June, uh...
Well, it's not free, it's included in the price that we agreed upon.
I'm sorry. But Dr. Wallace came to us in June and said, figure out something, okay? We figured it out. I came to the board, I gave you handouts explaining exactly what this was going to take. We had a board meeting, Mrs. Glad, unfortunately, was absent that day, but we had handouts that we, that we gave everybody and I sat here and explained to you exactly what we're going to do.
Can I get to be paid $84,000 by the sector when I was saying, about $11,300, $54,000 to save $4,000?
No, we took, we took five vans out of the fleet to save. And I know you don't see it that way. How can it not be true if, if you have 31 vans one day, or 30 vans, all right, 30 vans one day, and you have 25 the next, how can you not say that does not save us money?
Well, we lost, is that minus the four that's, for the, like, you keep saying 30 and 25. I mean, let's be honest, most of us sitting at this table really don't, don't understand what, how you got there. So is it the Delphi, because there was four vans?
Yes, the Delphi had vans. Let's say four.
Those four Delphi vans come off of that focus, right?
Those four Delphi vans, now, I don't know what he's using them for, but he's saying they're still there, but I know that they're not used to transport those students to Delphi, they're all being transported on one bus.
Right, so that's why we went from 30 to 25.
Yes. It's a contributing factor, yes.
Okay. So it's a net to loss? That's where I'm dealing with it. Is that, is that right? I'm just trying to understand what you're talking about.
That would be the 25 with M&amp;R and the three with first student would give you 28.
That's what I'm saying, but you didn't save this first paragraph, you did not save that. Those vans are there, I'll put them on tomorrow. I'll put them on tomorrow, we'll add another one.
I understand that.
Hold it, that's what I'm trying to tell you. So when you say, from this first paragraph, you take $16,000, there's no statement there. So you're actually spending $32,000 more, $26,000 more for the shuttle?
I'm not spending a percent and a half that we paid the first two years and I'm not spending $100 to add on right now. I mean, if you... I mean, I get all that, but we've already paid that for a couple of years. I mean, so, you know, yes, there is an issue there for me with that, I mean, it just doesn't go away. I mean, and if you say, hey, look, while we bring the vans back, then, and those charges stay, then all of a sudden, the $200.85 for a van is now $300 or $400.85 per van. It's off now, yes, it is.
It was off, I just worked the question on this last page, are all in, off, all in.
Yeah, right now it is, yes, but had I not gotten into it, it would not have been because I just took it off of last month's bill in the bill, in the prior month's bill.
This is from last month, or last year, but including what you took off the area. This is from last year, all in, 227 a day, all in, a total cost of $8,000. I mean, I, this is something weird, so I'm telling you now, I'm getting your pick on. Did you scrutinize first student, same you scrutinized?
Yes, I've gone through their bill too, I've looked at...
I actually, yesterday, did you scrutinize, you said you're just getting into it.
Yeah, I am just getting into it, I can read, I'm a pretty good reader, I do research.
Three months into scrutiny here and you're just not starting to look at first student. And I brought it to you yesterday, a big savings on first student, though, I looked at it for 10 minutes.
And you know what? Jason, you run your business, I'll run mine, I don't tell you how to run yours.
I don't understand what you're saying there, this is the school district.
I know, and I run the school district.
And it's taxpayer, wasn't it, Jesse?
Yeah, and I'm saving taxpayers money.
You're not.
I'm looking out after their, their best interests. I'm one of the taxpayers in the school district.
I'm telling you right now, if you're not saving money, it's stupid.
I'm sorry you don't see it that way, I don't, I see it differently and I can add it up different.
It does matter. I mean, you're saying we lost four vans, we didn't lose them, just didn't, actually, the three vans you took off, you get the first student and the two that each out, that's the five vans that are missing. The four are still running, the four that you're referring to in this first paragraph are still running every day.
I don't understand. I, I, I'm just going to be honest, I'm confused. You, you keep saying that there's four vans that are still running that, that, that we now...
Because they were two a year.
But we, we run these Delphi students with a shuttle, a mini bus?
Yeah.
So, so you're saying that those four, or, yeah, four, are still operational, that we still pay for them each month?
Well, in this first chapter, first student even said, why you not, you don't lose them. You said they still run elementary ones.
But we had, at the end of the year, and I'll get that ETR report, I said, oh, we'll get it, with 31 vans on there and now I have a bill in front of me with 25. That means there's six vans that are going at a time.
26, you have to deal with, you're 46, Dave.
26, excuse me.
26, three to the first student.
But 31.
That's 31. That's my thing, Rich, I don't know, um, I mean, I'm a band district, and I'm weird, it's just different basis, I'm coming up.
And we're still paying for those four vans.
Are there other kids, are our kids on there?
We have elementary kids, but it's the elementary and the Delphi.
Did we only pay one flat rate for it for the day?
No.
Yes, you play one, why did you say no, Mr. Barron?
He says a flat rate for the day, that's not...
It's 280 for morning, one in the afternoon, the Delphi's before the next morning run, and afternoon run. There's no extra charge for Delphi, 280 a day, you want it all, 85 a day.
Last year, Mr. Raymond, we had a Delphi and an elementary, part Marshall, we won. When you took the 16 students away, I still have to take those elementary students, so those four vans stay there. All I did was take them to New directions, to the middle school, and instead of just your van having five kids on it to go to the middle school, now it has three kids on it and another one next to it, because your elementary has overflowed. So I still have to run those vans, without the Delphi, they still have to go to an elementary school. So you did not lose the van, they still run every day.
We're still paying for those vans?
Correct.
Do we have to pay for, and I'm sorry, this is a redundant question, do we have to pay additional if we have a new student that needs to be taken home? Are we paying extra for that?
How much, how much does that cost?
$30. That's what he said, so he did that a few times, these extra vans would save $4,000, but it's off the district. You can't say that it's free.
Are there less vans that we're paying for the M&amp;R invoice on a monthly basis?
First, did you took the first student? And who names them?
Here's one other thing on, for about here, Mr. Scott, let this out. Here's a bill from May of 2023. Man 18 went to Delphi and Marshall for 21 days, he came out with $4,156. But man 18 came back and called one student, had a college bill for 22 days, and we're charging additional $1,674. It's one van, we don't get that, but that was an additional charge.
Wait a minute, wait, wait, stop right there for a minute. What was the charge for that homeless kid? Was it $50 that came up to the $1,600? Or was it $100 for every day?
It was a shared day, so it was only 50, it was a shared cost.
Okay, shared cost, $50, so that, that's a correct cost.
Jason, are you saying you're willing to reopen the contract then with the, the school district? To renegotiate the contract? No, no, to open, to open the contract purely to resolve this problem. It would be open for everybody. Yeah, we would have to open it to the public. To re, to renegotiate the contract, Jason, what Doug's saying is we'd have to open it for bid.
I feel I have a contract of, it's been three years, we've had a question till this year. M&amp;R is all these kids for 20 years, first student is all their kids for 20 years. None of this happened, but Mr. Renzi, the school board director, chairman of the transportation committee, and director of first student, that's why. I think there's some sort of conflict here, I'm sorry. This deal was made between Rich and him. I've talked to multiple board members, we weren't even aware of this deal. These vans being, you want a first student, we sent them, we sent these students, they're on the bus, they're on the back, they're on the bus. You'll do my drivers a bit, and I said, where are you going? With more first student, these vans, what you want to make, to drive, right? I mean, I'm sorry, there's something, all right, like, these four vans for Delphi, so I'll put this kid right back on the van tomorrow. Three vans you're going to give back to me, you're going to take them, $265 a day, or $200 a day. Okay, no second page, you're going to take them every 30 days. There was $330 for a sick kid. You can't justify paying extra $200 a day to save 30, 300 dollars off.
Are you going to pick up our list, getting you out of 3?
Our van, you saw the email, I said, you saw.
I didn't see an email, Mr. Barron.
I think we got three bills from last year.
Why is the transportation director, Captain Director, Mr. Barron, always picking these students, picking up the mail? He saw the email, she said, I see. She questioned first student, she said, you're actually taking these people on a bus? This kid doesn't live in...
Have no issue with that.
That's why transportation director, they're like, you're, they'll put them on a bus.
I get that, I get that.
I don't know what I'm saying, but... The Delphi kids, you go back on buses to Lorhan, so there's $26, you can save the student right now. The three vans we took off of us, that we've had for 20 years, I had three, Christine had seven, we've had it. It was at Calvary, we had Colored Area, because we feel this deal was... I would just like to, last year, the same deal was made. And Mr. Raymond brought up, they were paying $317 for a van, and Mr. Raymond decided to put it on. And Mr. Raymond made the directive that all vans, you're going to have that on the bus. I just, I want to make a fact, I feel like my contract's being breached. I feel like there's a law structure with Mr. Renzi.
Your con, your contract's not being breached, I've taken that under legal advisement, was advised that we haven't breached it at all. There's no exclusivity clause at all in there. If you want to go out and buy 15, 20 buses, compete against Mr. Renzi, you can do that tomorrow and no problem.
So why does that happen with the past, past 30 years?
I can't tell you or speak for what's happened in the past, I can speak for what I'm responsible for now and looking at our cost on a, on a regular basis and trying to cut those costs. Then diving into this like I have and found the discrepancies that we've discussed. Again, that percent and a half that should have never been charged to items that were not privy to that. Likewise, of being double charged for charges, we should be singularly charged.
Transportation of the contract, which I told you, I still agree with, I just...
Well, I mean, that's not my interpretation, that is how the contract is written. And, and I'll even stand on that because if you look at the items, your van cost, whether it's a lift van or a regular van use, looking at the contract on that payment page, it specifically cites annual increases within those categories. That's never cited anywhere else, so it's not in there, that's not there. And then when you talk about the double charge on the $50 for a local kid, it says per student, not per student, per trip. And that was charged on many occasions through the years. So just because it was done in the past, you can't do it forward, I mean, we, we, we found it and we're addressing it. I get that.
I sent you a bill earlier, every month that bill's signed off on, Mr. Barron, there has to be one question for three years.
I haven't looked at it till now and I'm the one that brought the questions. I'm not either, I don't look at the transportation bills every day, but I am now, on both sides, not just one.
So when the bus company sends out an email, or it says, blue, green, and red tags, the elementarys are all riding on one bus, how many buses are you charged for?
Should be only one bus.
And that goes on every day? That goes on every day? You have an activity problem here, $78, I don't see all one?
That's a field trip, that's for a field trip.
We've got, we've got buses going out to the Nutcracker, December, all from Marshall and everywhere else, that's what it'll be. Six buses stopped in every school.
Not, not to continue... Not to continue to drag this out. Is there a possibility that we could see three months' bills from last year and three months' bills from this year?
That's what I was going to ask, how much time has, how much time has elapsed since we've been using first student? A year, three months, six...
A year, three months, six months? I don't know. Pardon me? Starting this year. So we would have, we would have transportation bills from that point on?
You know, I just, I just.
To determine either savings or, is that correct?
August, August through the October bill, we've knocked thirty some thousand dollars off the M and R.
That we've paid in transportation since the beginning of the year? No matter, no matter what outfit is carrying the kids?
Absolutely. I can give you.
So, so Rich, I, I think what, what Ed's asking, we don't want to see a summary. We want to see an actual invoice.
Absolutely.
We, we, we want to see the actual invoices. Is that what you're asking, Ed?
Yeah. How much money have we saved or not saved in, in X amount of time per month?
And just compare it to, to last year for September, October, November.
Correct. The other question.
Yeah, yeah. What if we pay M and R? What if we pay first?
And we can do that in this hour?
Well, along with that, though, we want to take those two vans that are the, the distance vans, the ones that aged out. We want to have that cost too because no matter what happens, that comes off.
Right.
So if you get the last year's invoice and you take those two vans off, what is the cost? And what's the cost for this year? That would be. Apples, apple, apple, apple.
Right. I mean, we've been doing those types of calculations to get to this. I thought this would be simpler, but that's, I got no problem with any. I can give you those.
I think everybody at the table and, and the new, new members coming on, all, all everybody wants to, would agree on is that if it's a cost savings to the district, that's all we want. Because we know when it comes down to June and we're looking at the budget and raising taxes, we want to say we did everything we can to, to, uh, cut the budget anywhere we can and save as much money as we can. And if, if that ends up being a savings, whichever way it is, then I say we go with the savings. Are we good with, good with that?
Does that work for you, Mr. Scott?
I guess. I mean, it just belongs more time than I'm on getting this van through in my contract. I mean, it says nowhere in the first legal contract to order that.
It doesn't say anywhere in your contract that you're the exclusive van provider either. It doesn't say anywhere in his contract that he's exclusive bus provider.
But he hasn't been for the last twenty-two years.
I don't know. Jason?
I don't know. I mean, I haven't, I started here in two thousand and three. I don't know. I, I don't, I don't know. I don't, I don't think first student was the provider when I first got here. I think it was another.
It's been first students since the nineties.
Okay, well, then I, there you go. See, I.
Didn't they change names?
They changed, they changed names.
I thought Burke Bus Lines ran before that. I know for sure they did. Yeah, it was in the nineties.
First student just changed names. That's all. Same company. Okay, we're gonna move on. Thank you. Approval, I'd like to have a motion for the approval of minutes for special meeting of October ninth, twenty twenty-three, and regular meeting of October eighteenth, twenty twenty-three.
I make a motion.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the attendance records of committee meetings and work sessions, board policy and safety committee meeting of November first, twenty twenty-three, and work session of November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Make motion.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. DeAndrea. Now, first, I would like to thank all of our educators in the district. It is American Education Week this week. So I would like to give everyone that works in the district, we all have a, a say in a, in a role that we play in our students' education. So I thank everyone, including the board, for what you do for our youth, and I appreciate everything that everybody does. And I don't know if I mentioned this last month, but I'd like to also thank District Attorney Bauer for the thirty thousand dollar donation to improve our current security footprint. That money will go to purchase some cameras. So I would like to thank Mr. Bauer as the outgoing District Attorney for that donation also. So we appreciate that from Mr. Bauer. Um, if you read the paper today, I would also like to thank Ms. Kerick and Clark Elementary School, Eighty-four lumber and hearts at catering for the Veterans Day breakfast for our veterans at Clark during Veterans Day. We'd like to thank them. It was really nice to see the students out there serving our men and women who have served, past and present. So thank you for Clark Elementary School. Also, I'd like to congratulate, well, let me read this. The IU One two thousand and twenty-three holiday card. This is from Ms. Yvonne Pinkley from IU One. I wanted to let you know that the final voting has taken place for this year's holiday card, and Gregory Washington's card was chosen to be used to represent the IU, which is twenty-five school districts, are involved in that union. And he's from Clark Elementary School, and we would like to thank him and congratulate him on his card being nominated for the IU One Christmas card. Also, lastly, I would like to thank Jimmy Frye from Frye Lumber for his generous donation of the walnut and poplar woods worth about sixty-five hundred dollars to the high school industrial manufacturing class. I donated that to help with their materials that they need to produce things there. So I'd like to thank him also for his kind donation. Thank you, Frye Lumber. Lastly, I would like to thank the Pennsylvania School Boards Association. They donated to our library a book that I'll be sending out to the elementaries to rotate around. So thank you to PSBA for making sure that literacy is at the forefront of what they do. Thank you, PSBA. And now, lastly, we have a few board members, three to be specific, that will be going off the board here in December. And I appreciate everything that they have contributed to the betterment of our students. And I have a plaque here for each one, and I'll read the first plaque, but they're, they're identical. Laurel Highlands School District wishes to recognize Mr. Doug Seppic for outstanding leadership in education and to your community. Board member for seven months. Thank you, Mr. Seppic, for your time and for your dedication. Likewise, I would like, again, the Laurel Highlands School District would like to recognize Ms. Nancy Glad for outstanding leadership in education to our community. Board member for eight years. Ms. Glad, thank you. And lastly, Mr. Kim Renzi. Laurel Highlands School District wishes to recognize Mr. Kim Renzi for outstanding leadership in education and to our community. Board member for four years. Thank you, Mr. Renzi, for your dedication. Mr. DeAndrea, I'd like for everyone to give all those outgoing board members a round of applause again for their dedication to what they've done. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Wallace. Academic Foundation Report, Mr. Consec.
There is no academic foundation report for this one.
Contract, Comprehensive Strategic Plan, Board Policy and Public Relations Committee. Board Policy Committee Report. I'd like to get a motion to approve revised social media policy, Exhibit A.
Second.
I need a motion.
Oh, I'll make a motion.
Second. Proper motion's been made in second. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That concludes that report. Curriculum Committee, Mrs. Glad, your last one.
C one, I's informational. Parent-teacher conferences will be held on Wednesday, November twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, from eight to eleven a.m., and on Monday, November twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, from two to four and six to eight. Exact numbers on conferences will be held, um, will be reported at the next board meeting. C two I is also informational. American Education Week is being celebrated the week of November thirteenth to the nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. This year's theme is together for safe, just, and equitable schools. The district will hold activities throughout the week and would like to thank everyone for contributing to provide the best educational opportunities for our students. In addition, this presents our community with a wonderful opportunity to celebrate public education and honor individuals who are making a difference in ensuring that every child receives a quality education. C three is also informational. There was no school in the Laurel Highlands School District on Friday, November tenth, twenty twenty-three, in order for students and staff to pay tribute and honor Veterans Day and those who have served our country. We thank you for your service. C four is also informational. Laurel Highlands School District has once again received the Harold Standard Community Choice Award for the best school system in twenty twenty-three. This is a direct reflection of the hard work and dedication of all the students, parents, staff members, board members, and community members that make Laurel Highlands a great school system. Thank you. C five, informational. The secondary fall department chairperson meetings have been completed. C six, A, I'd like to put into the form of a motion to approve student teacher placements for spring twenty twenty-four as listed below.
I'll second it. Proper motion's been made in second. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
That concludes my report. Mr. DeAndrea.
Thank you, Mrs. Glad. Buildings and Grounds Committee, Mr. Meadows.
Thank you, Mr. DeAndrea. I'd like to thank Mr. Malino for his report. I'd also like to thank Mr. Malino and his staff for their continued hard work. And as always, facilities, facilities, our fields, everything looks great. Thank you guys for all the hard work. That concludes my report, Mr. DeAndrea.
Thank you, Mr. Meadows. Finance, Budget, Taxation Committee, Mr. Raymond.
Uh, yes, I need to make a motion to table F one, F three, and F six.
Second.
Proper motion's been made in second. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Make a motion to approve the payment of bills found in Exhibit C.
Second.
Proper motion's been made in second. Any questions on the motion? Roll call, Kim.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Meadows?
Yes.
Mrs. Glad?
Yes.
Mr. Colensick?
Yes.
Mr. Renzi?
Yes.
Mr. Lammon?
Yes.
Mr. Seppic?
Yes.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Uh, the investment report is informational, but that is not included in your board packets. Need to make a motion to approve the federal report found in Exhibit A.
Second.
Proper motion's been made in second. Any questions on the motion?
Exhibit A.
A. Roll call, Kim.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Colensick?
Yes.
Mr. Lammon?
Yes.
Mr. Renzi?
Yes.
Mr. Seppic?
Yes.
Mr. Meadows?
Yes.
Mrs. Glad?
Yes.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Eight yes.
That's all, Mr. DeAndrea.
Thank you, Mr. Raymond. Health, Nutrition, and Foods Committee, Mrs. Glad.
I'd like to put into the form of a motion, my last one. F S one, the cafeteria report found in Exhibit H.
I'll second it.
Proper motion's been made in second. Any questions on the motion? Roll call, Kim.
Mrs. Glad?
Yes.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Lammon?
Yes.
Mr. Seppic?
Yes.
Mr. Meadows?
Yes.
Mr. Renzi?
Yes.
Mr. Colensick?
Yes.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Eight yes. Mr. DeAndrea, that is my final report.
Thank you, Mrs. Glad. Security, Transportation, and Safety Committee, Mr. Renzi.
Thank you, Mr. DeAndrea. I can inform the relation of the updated revised drive list for M and R. Transportation is listed in Exhibit I.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That concludes your report. All right, thank you.
The Laurel Highlands School District applied with the Environmental Protection Agency, the EPA. We're in the third round of the grant process to get fifteen electric buses. And we are on the priority list to get buses through for our student. We, we made it to round three. We only have one more round to go, so hopefully we're gonna get these buses. They're giving three buses, electric buses.
So the district would have them?
They would, they would not, or student would have them, but they would be tapped out specifically for Laurel Highlands schools.
Okay. Hope the grid gets this thing.
That concludes my report, there, President March Flan.
Thank you, Mr. Renzi. Human Resources Committee, Mr. Colensick.
Thank you, Mr. DeAndrea. Under P one A, I'd like to put in the form of a motion to approve additional substitute teachers, including Ms. Kathy Rice, found in Exhibit J.
Second.
I'll second it. Proper motion's been made in second. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Under P two, I'd like to put in the form of a motion to approve the request for professional employee A for a disability leave, for parental leave, per the L H E A collective bargaining agreement, beginning January nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, and continuing through the remainder of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Employee A will be using sick days from January third to January eighteenth of next year.
Proper motion's been made in second. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Under P three, I'd like to put in the form of a motion to approve permission for Jason Johns and up to seven others to ascend, attend, rather, the ISP Conference Station Square in Pittsburgh, January twenty-ninth through February first, twenty twenty-four. Total cost of the conference will be covered by Title I funds.
I'll second it.
Proper motion's been made in second. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Under P four, I'd like to put in the form of a motion to approve additional substitute employees for support personnel, found in Exhibit J.
I'll second it.
Proper motion's been made in second. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Under P five, I'd like to put in the form of a motion for the selection of Mrs. Donna Wingrove as the high school secretary per terms of the collective bargaining agreement. Seniority date will be November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Exact placement date to be determined.
I'll second it.
Proper motion's been made in second. Any questions on the motion? Roll call, Kim.
Mr. Colensick?
Yes.
Mr. Lammon?
Yes.
Mr. Meadows?
Yes.
Mr. Raymond?
Pass.
Mr. Renzi?
Yes.
Mr. Seppic?
Yes.
Mrs. Glad?
Yes.
Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Any passes wish, wish to change?
No.
Seven yes, one pass.
Motion carries.
Under P six, I'd like to put in the form of a motion to approve Mrs. Lynette Hillen as the cafeteria manager of high school per terms of the collective bargaining agreement. Action is needed, as, action is needed as this is considered a promotion. Exact placement date to be determined.
I'll second it.
Proper motion's been made in second. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And under P seven, I'd like to put in the form of a motion to approve the paraprofessional update found in Exhibit K.
I'll second it.
Proper motion's been made in second. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
That concludes my report, Mr. DeAndrea.
Thank you, Mr. Colensick. Athletic and Extracurricular Activity Committee, Mr. Lammon.
Thank you, Mr. DeAndrea. Under A E one A, permission to solicit bits for spring sports. I'd like to put that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Proper motion's been made in second. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Lammon. Legal Advisement?
Uh, no action items and just, uh, to reiterate the issues that were discussed at the work session on Monday regarding the tax assessment abuse.
Thank you, Mr. Frank Hauser. General Matters. It's a reminder that the annual reorganization meeting is set for Monday, December fourth, twenty twenty-three, at six p.m. in the high school library immediately following, followed by the regular December meeting. Work session will be held starting at five p.m. that evening. The board photo will also be taken that evening. That's informational. Career and Technical Institute Report, Mr. Meadows.
Uh, right now, total enrollment is up to seven hundred and eighty-four students. Laurel Highlands has two hundred and seven students right now. Uh, some upcoming events, they're having a cornucopia flower arrangement class on November twentieth, a yule log class on December fifth, welding horseshoe Christmas tree class on December eleventh, Italian cookie class on December eleventh. There's also a second class being added to that one. There's a Toys for Tots stuff. Uh, there's a Toys for Tots stuff, a bus event that's going on up at the Fayette CTI, it's on December seventh, December second, uh, I believe it is from ten to four p.m. in the parking lot. And that concludes my report, Mr. DeAndrea.
Thank you, Mr. Meadows. Intermediate Unit One Report. Nothing to report. Other business, any other public comment?
Shall I have a comment?
Yes.
I'd like to thank the board for the opportunity to serve for the last four months, uh, the last seven months, uh, I don't know that I fooled my dad's shoes, but I appreciate the opportunity to fill this position on the board. Uh, I hope I contributed some insight and some, um, perspective to the board during the last seven months, uh, and a lot of times were disagreement on the board, but disagreement is actually a place of democracy, that's how things get done, oftentimes, uh, even a misagreement is a sign of dictatorship, right, of democracy. I congratulate the new board members, um, my dad was always positive of the great responsibility he had for the taxpayers and students of Laurel Highlands, and, uh, just keep that in mind in your service.
We'll miss your insight and your, uh, other legal advice along with the solicitor, so we had two legal advisors. Any other comments? Yes?
I, I would just like to say that, uh, I wanna thank the constituents of Laurel Highlands School District for giving the opportunity to serve for eight years, um, you know, when I first decided to run for the board, my goal was for parent choice, to give parents the most information I could about what was going on, so they could make the best choice for their own child, which I still feel is extremely important. I'm very proud of my, uh, opt-out movement, I know that that financially doesn't always help the district, but it's important for the child to not be subjected to the test. Um, also, really proud of getting air conditioners in the elementary schools, that's the first thing, um, and I was always afraid that a, a student was gonna pass out and, or a teacher and hit their head from heat, so I know I've heard from multiple teachers how much that has helped with the educational process, so, um, also just wanna say to our, our upcoming new board members, you have a lot of work to do with balancing the budget, um, I don't know how you're gonna do it, there's no magical fairy flying across the district depositing hundred-dollar bills from her satchel, I don't know where it's gonna come from, but this county, this district cannot handle a tax increase right now, so you have a lot of work to do, and I wish you all the luck and prayers, and I'm very, been very proud to be on this board and thank all of you for being so wonderful to work with, so.
Thank you for your eight years. Mr. Renzi.
I would just, uh, like to thank all you guys working with you, it's been a pleasure. Dr. Wallace? Here, I'll be back. Steve, I think, yes, sir. You guys have always been, we've had some spirited debates, to say the least, but we've all, always come to terms for the betterment of the district and for the kids, that's what you do. I hope the three new members understand that, that this is, uh, you're here for kids, you're here for tax breaks, you're not here for personal, uh, gain, uh, you don't get